Good evening. Thank you for joining us for the School District of Dearborn Hybrid Board Meeting for March 8th, 2021. We're getting started at 7:08. We were having some technical difficulties. We were able to come back to a hybrid meeting. This is our first in 2021 due to recent orders by the State of Michigan allowing us to gather in person again. If you're wanting to follow us online, the meeting ID for Zoom is 868-42366100. I call this meeting to order. Roll call vote, please. Roll call, please.
Trustee Sam Berry.
Here.
Trustee Patrick Diambrazio.
Here.
Trustee Roxanne McDonald.
Here, Dearborn, Michigan.
Trustee Adam Moser, here. Trustee Mary Petruskoff.
Here.
Trustee Irene Watts.
Here in Dearborn, Michigan.
President Jim Thorpe.
Here. Next item, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Ms. Lamise Sewell, Principal of Henry Ford Elementary School, will introduce students who will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hello, Dr. Maleko, President Thorpe, and School Board Trustees, and the entire Dearborn community. My name is Lamise Thorpe, Principal at Henry Ford, and on behalf of the entire staff here, I want to thank you for welcoming our students to read the pledge today.
Hi, my name is Mohammed Shaito. I'm from Henry Ford Elementary School. I'm in third grade.
Hi, my name is Doris Shaito, and I'm from Henry Ford School, and I'm from second grade.
Hi, my name is Rema Shaito, and I'm in third grade, and I'm in Henry Ford Elementary School.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much to the students that led us in the pledge today. Next item, please.
Superintendent's update.
All right, I'm going to put everything together, combine it, but we do start with our traditional. We've been doing this ever since last April, and it's hard to believe it's been a year since we were here in a regular meeting, almost a year to this date. So we have over 520,000 U.S. deaths as a result of COVID and 16,500 in Michigan. Along with that, some tragic news that hit home locally for our district, and we had a teacher, Kate Black, at Lindbergh, who passed away in a tragic car accident. It was tough on Lindbergh staff and the Dearborn Schools staff, and obviously her family. I was able to visit at the church during the ceremony, before the ceremony, and meet with her family. Ms. Teba, and I know our hearts and prayers, our thoughts and prayers go out to the entire family in the Lindbergh community. Along with that, we had a custodian, John McDonald, that worked at DeVal, and he was recently on leave for health reasons, and he had passed away as well on the same week. And I actually worked with him at DeVal when I was principal there, so our thoughts and prayers are with him and his family. And so if we could take a moment of silence for all those who may be dealing with tragedy at this point in time, along with the two staff members that we're mentioning. I also want to commend Ms. Teba, the principal over at Lindbergh, for the job she did when she was dealing with the situation in her leadership. So I'm going to go along. I want to mention, just we have these glass dividers here. We're back, as President Thorpe mentioned, hybrid. We're allowed to do it legally, and this time we have even more trustees at the table, so this will allow us to have more, given the restrictions in the number in the room and the tables. So we also have these available in schools as well, and I know a big order recently came in. I could see President Mazza nodding because she's happy about that as well, so it's available in our schools. And we're obviously acting as role models and wearing the mask. We are allowed to take them off when we speak legally, but we put them back on as well. Okay, moving along, under agenda items, we have retirements, and we've had it every month. And so we have Charles Henry, over 21 years of service; Troy Patterson, over 27 years of service; Glenda Rice, over 11 years of service; Frances Rule, over 22 years of service; and Cheryl Zizmer, over 19 years of service. If we can show appreciation, congratulate them and thank them for their service. I also just want to mention with Troy, we have his position up right now, and I've worked closely with him over the years, and he's done great work, especially given this COVID with the technology. It was so essential, so I want to thank him for myself and him. We used to co-chair the Technology Committee in the district, so.
I remember when I was on the board, and we took him out of Woodworth as a principal and brought him over here.
Yeah, so he's done some great work. And again, all our retirees, but because of my personal close relationship with him as a colleague, I wanted to mention that. Okay, so right now, we're going to start with some positive. I got to tell you, I came from seven schools today last week, and again, following all the safety protocols. Last week, I was in several on Monday and Tuesday, and we're phasing in because we have the vaccines and other things that we're implementing. But I got to tell you, I'm very impressed with staff out there, very impressed with the students. The students are all wearing the masks appropriately. It is elementary to high school, everywhere I've been, as I dusted off the vision sign and I have it out, and I can tell that the students are smiling even though I can't see their faces. And they also have different designs of masks, and they are proud. And I was wearing the Wayne County mask in the Dearborn Schools, and I see a lot of students with that. So I think, you know, students have come through, and of course, staff, and staff were very happy and pleased as well. So to celebrate our return, our first day of school, sort of, in March, we have a little video we put together.
[music]
[shouting]
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 ...down and if anyone has any comments on that before I go to my next point, I'll open it. President Thorpe.
Trustee Barry.
Dr. Maliko, you keep thanking the board, but pretty much what the board did was approve your recommendation, yours and your teams. So I want to take this opportunity to thank you and thank your team and thank our teachers. I know we have President Mazza here with us tonight, all of our staff, instructional, non-instructional. What a, what a job well done this past year. I can't, this, this video we just saw brings so much joy to my heart. I mean, yeah, this was, we made, you, us as a team made some tough decisions since last March, April, but to see this was amazing. And I know former trustee Mayor Lane is most likely is watching this meeting. I want to remind her of a discussion that we had back in April of 2020. Her biggest fear was us losing somebody under our watch. And I can pretty comfortably say tonight that we didn't lose any community members directly to the schools. We didn't lose any employees or students or parents because of the plan and the plan that you and your team put together. I refer to, you say the plan, I refer to as the Dearborn Plan. I'm very proud of it to be the Dearborn Plan. Every time the governor would speak or somebody from Washington DC would speak, we all received phone calls, what's going to happen? What's going to change? We didn't budge from our plan, the Dearborn Plan, since October, and it served us well. And I agree with you. Athletics is what gets us in trouble, what's been getting us in trouble. And the state played, you know, I'm going to say it the way it is, the state played a little politics when it came to athletics, especially when it came to the fall sports, football. I still can't believe, you know, I've always supported wrestling, but I watched some of these videos where the wrestlers are, what is it, fist bumping, but then on top of each other. It's like, how do you, it's like, okay, but that's, that's all, to me, that's all politics right now. We all support athletics and the arts, stuff like that, but that was, it was mind-boggling. I want to especially thank our principals for the job they've been doing this past month. All the phone calls that ICE received, we received, their instruction from your team was to refer the parents to the principals. And as far as I know, every one of the parents that wanted to keep their kids online, they were, you know, they were, they serviced them. And you mentioned 6,000 students, that's probably what, I can't, quick math, probably around a quarter, 25%, low, less than 25% of our, our students are in VLP right now. I mean, this was a school that you and Shannon and the rest of your team, the teachers, put together just, just like that in a couple of weeks, and it's serving us well. So thank you and thank you to your team.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Trustee Pelichkov.
Yeah, and I want to add to that, number one, one of the comments you made was about that we had gone back to Level E. We were not the only district that went back to a Level E. There were several in the Wayne County area that went back, and I do believe it was the athletics. Because when you look at the districts that went that way, they are also have quarantined a number of their athletic teams as well. So I, I do believe that we have to keep a watchful eye. And yes, we are moving out of the indoor athletics, hopefully in a timely enough fashion that, that we won't have a lot of issues there and we can get back to watching. And we will be watching the numbers as the student body count grows within our school community. The other thing I'd like to remind parents is, because I was seeing a lot of comments when we first started, and there's still confusion about our A-B day and the Wednesday cleaning day, and they don't think we're cleaning after the students on A-Day or B-Day or anything. And you also brought up about how you saw the custodians out there cleaning diligently every day. We're, just because we have a Wednesday asynchronous day added to our days right now in this hybrid program does not mean that our schools aren't being well cleaned after each day's and with that group of students in the building. So that we are not helping spread and transmit any community spread from different cohorts inside the building. So I want to make it clear again, we, we can't repeat ourselves enough. Communication is the key here, is that we keep on reminding everyone of what we're doing and what the help that we need from the parents and the students in order to keep everybody safe and not have to turn around immediately and shut the schools down again. That, that would be something that we don't want to see happen. So I'm glad that you also brought that up as well. And in the end, trustee Watts and myself were in some of the buildings last week as well, on March 1st, the first day school entered. And yeah, it was a little quiet, it's, it's not quite there yet to being filled, but we got to go into a couple of elementary schools and visit with the students. They were excited to be back. They, they were, I, I think they were a little confused about the way the day was playing out, but everyone was pulling together, everybody was participating, and they were back to feeling a sense of community again. And I think that's what we need to help promote as we move forward, as carefully as we can, because I also talked to a lot of the staff and the principals. They were delighted to be back, but they're also cautiously optimistic that we can sustain this and maintain a healthy building for everyone. So we all have to do our part still.
Yeah, I'll add a couple of things to both what trustee Barry and trustee Pelichkov said. I believe that the administration bent over backwards to make sure that people were comfortable, allowing additional people to go into the virtual learning program, though twice before we gave them an opportunity and said, this is your last chance. We still did everything we could to make sure people were comfortable if their kids were going to remain remote. But we never guaranteed that there wouldn't be a case of COVID once school started again. We will do everything that we can in our power to make sure that we're able to keep people healthy and safe, but there's, there's no guarantees. And that, that also is, it goes back to the community, it goes back to home. We need to make sure people are exhibiting the correct behaviors, keep washing your hands, keep the mask on. CDC comes out today and says if people have been vaccinated, it still means that you should wear your, your masks unless you know the other people have been vaccinated. And speaking of vaccines, we've had roughly 2,000 of our employees now that have either been fully vaccinated or they're going back for their second vaccination, which just happens to coincide with our startup and why the students only went to school one day last week and they'll only go one day this week before next week's one, they'll actually go two days. So a lot of moving parts, moving into the warmer weather, hoping for good things as the vaccine rollout continues and looking forward to having additional positive news coming from the district. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. And since we'd mentioned the vaccines, I'm going to kind of jump out of order here on two of the things I have. And we have some guests joining us virtually. You're speaking of the vaccines from DMC. I want to mention this as they come in. I want to give a, I'm going to do two things here today. It's International Women's Day, and four of the high executives coming in from DMC are female. We have three on the board. We have, I believe, we have Joanne here, Harris. We also have several on executive cabinet, the majority of executive cabinet are women. On my executive cabinet and cabinet, we have many, and then obviously many teachers and other professionals in the district, so I'm going to highlight the educators. But since we have DMC coming in, I'm kind of going to say thank you to all the women, you know, professionals and, and, you know, just want to recognize, last month we recognized for Black History Month, and this month we can recognize the women and maybe show, the men can show some appreciation right now. And I'll do a shout out for my wife, too, who is a professional at home right now.
Smart guy.
We're going on 25 years' marriage, so I know when I have to. So we're going to call in for the vaccines from DMC, Tommy Tran, Karima Ben-Tunusi, Kathy Donovan, Jeannie Snow, Samya Mogali, who we, we have her sister who works in the district. And I want to thank them. I believe we have a little slide that we're going to show possibly to introduce them, and they're here virtually. And I am going to turn it over to them, but I do want to thank them over, and I think the board might remember, and I think President Thorpe, I called you shortly after, I was, you know, we were working so hard to get the vaccines. And when Tommy from DMC gave me a call and said, you know, we got to, how many do you need? And I said, well, we're looking, you know, we have 2,700 employees, we know we had about 600 that already received it, we can use as many as possible. And he's like, okay, we'll give you, we have 1,000. He called me back later that day. I'm like, outstanding. And by the way, my mother, shout out to her, she retired from DMC, so, and I did tell them that we went for the vaccine. And so we're just so appreciative, because as we got 1,000 from DMC, we were able to get the rest from Wayne County, and we had staff members that were working hard. And so I think it also, I didn't mention this earlier because I wanted to bring them in and just thank them and let them speak, but I know Jane Maz is here and the relief for all of us, but even for me, that our staff are now vaccinated. I think the board feels it so that when we're in the school, that's that extra layer of protection for our students and our staff with that vaccine. And President Thorpe, you mentioned this week, so we will have, they'll be going back to DMC on Thursday and Friday, because that's the Moderna they, they received. What a well-oiled machine. There was a Channel 7 news report, I believe it was Channel 7, I think, was it seven or four? It may have been four, I'm sorry. And it was very well received, and boy, do they run a, a great operation down there at DMC. It was seamless, you got in and out, and, you know, they had a high volume, and they were just trying to help the people in the community. So I don't know if any of them would like to say anything right now, I think we have them up, but I'll open it up for any of the, any of our friends from DMC, we're so appreciative. Let's, let's give an applause to DMC.
Thank you, Dr. Maliko. Thank you, everyone. Good evening, happy International Women's Day to all the women, and good evening, everyone. I am Karima Ben-Tunusi, I'm DMC Adult Central Campus CEO comprised of Detroit Receiving Hospital, Harper University Hospital, Hudson Women's Hospital, and the Heart Hospital. First of all, I just want to say thank you for inviting us tonight. The DMC leadership is very appreciative of the opportunity tonight as well as the opportunity and the privilege to serve our Dearborn community. This past year have been very, very challenging to all of us and our healthcare heroes that, you know, were in the front line, you know, working through the pandemic in a very challenging environment. But I also want to take an opportunity to thank all of you and certainly the teachers who are also the often unrecognized heroes for all the work they've done to continue to teach our children. I am a mother of two and had the experience to try to teach, to teach my kids online, and it was very, very challenging. So I'm grateful to the opportunity to be able to help vaccinate them so they can actually go back to school and, so I can send my kids back, actually. It, it was, as Dr. Maliko said, it was really absolutely delighted to share that on February 11th and the 12th, the Detroit Medical Center had the privilege of partnering with the Dearborn Public Schools District to vaccinate 1,000 staff members. We had a great day hosting them, and we are looking forward to seeing them again this week, Thursday and Friday. So we are really excited to re-host them. And I want to assure everyone, we had a lot of great feedback about the service that everyone received, and I want to assure you that that same service, that same experience is what we, we do provide at DMC for anyone that comes to us for their healthcare needs. We would love to partner with the Dearborn Public Schools on future endeavors and would love to hear from all of you on how we can make it, make it happen and better moving forward. As you know, across the DMC health system, we offer comprehensive services across the continuum of care, of, of care, and have multiple locations to include eight hospitals, two of them are children's hospitals, outpatient clinics, surgical centers, rehab institutions, and we have several of them within the Dearborn community. And I also want to assure you that we, we as a health system have invested heavily in resources to make our facilities safe for our patients, staff, and visitors. Again, it is a privilege and honor to take care of our Dearborn community, and we'll look forward to strengthening our relationship and looking forward to serving you moving forward. And with that, I do want to actually introduce my colleague, Kathy Donovan, who's the CEO at DMC Children's Hospital of Michigan. And Kathy, she has a few words to say as well. Thank you.
Dr. Maliko, I'm very interested in Roxanne's cat. It's calling Roxanne's scream. This is so cute. That's the best part about everybody's backgrounds. So, as Karima said, I am so of the Children's Hospital. Very important throughout how do we vaccinate.
Kathy, we're having problems with the audio feed. We're only getting about half of what you're saying. Oh, really? All right, I heard that on the Zoom, people can hear everything that you're saying, so let them hear it and we'll just assume what the other half the words are.
Okay. Roxanne laughed at my cat, so I thought y'all compared. So felt it was very, especially Children's Hospital, care of the teachers, that's the way to take care of the kids. Our kids are having a really tough time now. We've seen a lot of behavioral health issues coming through the emergency department that has been a direct effect of the COVID pandemic and what these kids are going through. So we needed to find a way to get y'all vaccinated so we could take care of the kids. We've been able to do three districts. Tommy's working on his fourth now, and this is something that we are going to stay committed to until we get all the teachers vaccinated. My mom was a teacher for 45 years, and all she has said over this past year is, thank you, God, I am not teaching right now. So God bless all the teachers, my heart goes out to you, and we appreciate you very much. And thanks for giving us the opportunity to partner with you to take care of our community. And I don't know, Jenny, if you have anything you want to add?
No, I think you and Karima covered everything and reiterate, you know, how proud and privileged we were to, to partner with the Dearborn Public Schools and looking forward to ongoing ways in which we can collaborate to better serve or continue to serve our communities.
Okay, thank you so very much. Again, this is a huge burden off my shoulders, I just feel a sense of relief. And, and I can tell you, after the first dose we received, and I forward some of this to the board and some to the exec, but I was receiving a tremendous amount of positive feedback and appreciation from staff across the board, staff that, you know, they may have had a relative that they wanted to protect or others. It was, not only were they complimenting the fact that they received the vaccines, but just the process. And I want to thank Wayne County. I know some people have gone to Wayne County to receive them, but again, together it all works. So thank you to DMC, thank you to Wayne County. I also need to give a shout out, Mesa Molly Bazey did a top-notch job. I mean, within five days scheduled, about 1,400 people, her and Carly Wall in the HR Department worked, I believe they came in in late hours and even on the weekend to get it done. And right now, I, I think when it's all said and done, we're probably going to have about in the next month, close to 2,200 staff. You know, we don't have an accurate count because some have been going for the makeup, and we're not scheduling them, but we're about 2,000, and I think we'll get to about 2,200, which is a real positive. So that's a real good sign. So again, thank you to everyone, and huge for us to have that many people. We are the third largest district in the state, so. Okay, I don't know why I was putting my mask back on, I'm still going. All right, two other things, I'm going to ask Mr. Wall to come up before I, under my commentary. I want to mention one thing, time and attendance is on for approval with the board today, and the reason I want to mention, I'm going to have Mr. Wall talk about other, this is something that I've been pushing going back to my HR time, and it's here. Some of you might recall that were on the board when I was in HR, I converted the HR into electronic. And so all the files were moved over and their extra backup and all the paper copies were eliminated and were fully electronic. But we also needed to move on our time and attendance system in the buildings, and Mr. Wall and Ms. Elaine Sterrett and Ms. Pam, Pam also, out of his department, Pam Miller, they did a great job to get this going. It is a huge job given, and that means, you know, when these, these badges will also act as time cards for, not instructional, instructional staff don't swipe in time, but it'll act as time cards. And the system is totally linked up to our electronic monitoring system, so allows for more efficiency and effectiveness. So I'm personally very pleased. When Tom mentioned to me, we're ready to go at cabinet, I think I, you could hear the excitement in my voice because it's something that took a lot of time and we've been working on. So I want to give kudos to the department, to, to business services and HR who have to work together on this.
Thank you. And as Glenn said, this process started back in September of 2020, and we're just now bringing it to the board because it took that long to bid out, to evaluate, make sure it's the best process or system for us. Because this is going to be over 827 employees that'll be doing this on a bi-weekly basis, submitting timesheets electronically now versus hard copies, which we've been dealing with since I've been here. So it took us a long time to get here, but it's exciting, and it'll take us another six months to fully implement it because we don't want to rush it. And there's a lot of training involved with staff so they know how to use it, because every time, every pay period is slightly different. Someone might have worked overtime for a first time, don't know how to do it, and all the secretaries, principals have to approve it. So there's a nice process online to make sure it all works nice. So we're glad to get to this point.
Thank you, Tom. So I'm going to let you just go ahead on with the equipment and vehicle upgrades that I have on my commentary that you.
Yes, if you remember back in our last board meeting back in February, we had the budget amendment presentation. And as we come to know, that we received roughly about $19 million in COVID federal money to deal with the pandemic and a variety of issues. And that's very restricted type money. And the federal government allowed us to supplement or supplant, which we normally can't do with federal money. And the budget process we used is that if it's restricted money, we always want to spend that first. So there's money that we spend in the general fund, you know, a good example is nurses. We have a few nurses on hand ourselves, we hired additional nurse, and we charge those to the restricted funds, which in turn leaves us additional money in our general fund for a more broader purpose. And as you know, finances hasn't been the strong point in Michigan for schools for many, many years. So there's been a lot of deferred maintenance on several items that we kind of just do what we can to keep things going. A good example of that is our vehicles. You have never seen a vehicle come forward from us because we keep them for a long time. The vehicles you'll see replacing today are 18 to 20 years old, and they're, and they're getting tough to maintain. And we got to make sure we have a reliable force to respond to when we have emergencies in the building. So you'll see on today's agenda, some of those things I talked about last month, about one-time money that we're trying to do to use that money, because the federal money is going to be here forever. So we generated a surplus in the general fund this year to be able to handle some of those one-time items. You'll see on there, we're asking to approve a couple of architects for building projects. So we're starting to whittle away at the bond issue that we talked about a couple of years ago that we had on the ballot that wasn't successful, but now we're trying to do some of the things internally with our own money during that process. So in here, you'll see architects, you'll see architects for maintenance, for mechanical engineering, civil engineering, those type of things. You'll see some replacement of vehicles. These are one-time things. It's not something you're going to see year after year after year. We probably won't look at vehicles again for another 15, 20 years as we maintain our vehicles as best we can, because we have our own mechanics on staff. And that's why you see a lot of the agenda items today, because when the fiscal year is on June 30th, we want to make sure these get in this year's budget for our one-time money. I'll answer any questions if you have any.
I've got one question I'll start with. You, you mentioned vehicles a couple of times, but you're not including buses when you're talking about vehicles. Buses are still a separate item to us.
Yeah, we usually do two to three buses a year, so that's still continuing as normal. We're talking John Deere tractors for all the, you know, 100 acres that we have in the district, they have to be cut, and the springtime's coming along, so having some new tractors will help us expedite that process to keep our grounds looking good. We have a maintenance staff on, on hand, we have roughly about 19 staffing positions, that only have about 13, 14 filled, but those people have to run the building, the building, the building to handle all the emergencies in our 34 buildings. Those are the type of one-time purchases we're talking about in today's agenda.
Trustee Pelichkov.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of reinforce the concept that Mr. Wall is explaining to the community, that we have found ourselves in an unusual situation financially this year. We know that we went a couple of years ago to the community for a large bond, and people are going to think that now we all of a sudden have this large pool of money that we've miraculously come up with this year to purchase and replace a lot of equipment that has aged past its usefulness. But what happened was, was that we wouldn't have had this opportunity had not it been for COVID, unfortunately. The circumstances are bad, but the fact is, is that we were able to finance this because we had other revenue resources that we're not going to see again. And so we have to take advantage of it now. And if we can find a way to use the CARES money and all the federal funding that's coming and free up some general funds to replace some of our equipment, then we have to take advantage of that, because this isn't going to probably come along again in this manner. We also were able to wait and see, last November, the Wayne Risa Millage was renewed as well. Those are also, we know, limited one-time funds. We don't want to use any of that type of money for things that are going to need sustainability as programs and employees are something we have to sustain for a long amount of time. But if we turn those funds over to one-time purchases of things that we need to replace at some point, just as we would roofs and boilers and all of those other one-time opportunities, we're going to have to take advantage of this particular period of time when we have some added finances that we may not ever see again. And we're going to use it in the best way we see as a opportunity when it comes to these purchases, because I have never, in the 10 years I've been on the board, had this many vehicles purchased at a time, ever. But like you said, they're 18 to 20 years old, and we know how much vehicles cost nowadays. And we also know how much vehicles cost to maintain. And so I can't see a better way to take advantage of our financial, I don't want to call it a windfall, but, but it's, it's a time when we have some extra money, and we are not going to have to take away from our current programs and, and staffing in order to finance these kinds of purchases. So I really appreciate the thoughtfulness put behind this.
Right, it's astute budgeting, making sure you spend restricted first as much as possible. And you'll be seeing other projects coming forward, go forward. You'll see a project for additional refrigeration space, so outside freezers, that building's coming forward. You'll see the parking lot project coming forward shortly, but we had to get the architects online first to get it done. They're ready to go and get the bid out shortly, and then we'll see those kind of projects. It's not just vehicles we're talking about, we're talking building projects, too, that you'll start seeing coming forward.
And in the end, this will take, take us to a better place if we have to move forward with any infrastructure bonds or millages down the road, because we have taken some of these items off our, off our plate at this time.
And I'll plug one more thing, because it's on the agenda also, is we're refinancing, financing some of the 2014 bonds. This is the first step in a long-term project planning for our infrastructure. This is the first step to look at our current debt, refinance at a lower interest rate to give us more flexibility going forward on what we can do for building projects.
So I just want the community at large to understand that we are trying to be as responsible as possible with taxpayer dollars, no matter where they come from, the federal government or from your homeownership.
Trustee Moser.
Yeah, I just want to be clear, as far as the vehicles that we're purchasing, this is coming from the general funds, it's not coming from the CARES Act money.
Correct. Correct. We moved money from the general fund, normally would have spent on nurses, social workers, to the CARES fund, because that was an eligible expense. They're free up for general fund money that we can use for broader purposes.
It's a trade-off, we're trading off.
Did you have any other questions?
No questions, no.
Trustee Watts.
So with the purchases of the new vehicles and the tractors and whatnot, how are we disposing, what are we doing with the old vehicles?
Usually we would do a bid, a vehicle auction on, in-site, and we've done that in the past where people would come on-site and look at them. Unfortunately, with our current situation, we're looking at an online auction for these used vehicles that we use a broker to do that, because he has a broader perspective of clients he can bring to the table, but it's usually an online auction.
And I know there was also something in there that was some of the equipment that might not be totally depreciated, that we might keep it as a reserve just in case it's still needed.
Correct. We have our own mechanics on staff, so if some of them are serviceable, we might keep them for parts if they're still interchangeable with the current technology.
Any questions for Mr. Wall? Thank you very much. Next item, please.